Good evening. I'd like to call the Maryville Town Council meeting for Tuesday, June 25th, 2019, to order. It is now 6:30 PM. Please stand for the invocation by Pastor Joan Meyer from Peace United Methodist, Peace United Church, and please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let us bow our heads but lift our hearts to the Lord. Gracious and loving God, we gather here in this moment to feel the protective shelter of your Spirit very present in this place, Lord God. We ask you to embrace us in holy love. We ask for your wisdom to be very present in this time, that the words that we speak, the things that we share, the things that we reminisce about will be done according to your wisdom. Lord God, just be with us in this time. Bless each and every one of our town council members and the members of our community who are here tonight, Lord God. We think about all of our first responders especially who are on the roads tonight, Lord God, keep them safe in your care. We earnestly pray in your holy name and all of God's people say, amen.
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 A pledge of allegiance to the light of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Roll call, Mr. Gertie.
Stan, here. Minchuck.
Here.
Yuzelak.
Here.
Baron.
Here.
Pettit.
Here.
Lamarcus.
Here.
And Hardaway.
Here.
Seventh president, we have quorum, petitions, communications, acknowledgements, and remonstrations. You want to mention the Andrain baseball team, Mr. Pettit?
Of course I do, Richard. Obviously, an exciting game last Tuesday night. Margie and Roxanne know I was down in Indianapolis and missed the Plan Commission, but let me tell you, it was well worth it because this kid that Andrain's got is absolutely phenomenal. Michael Doolin had 15 strikeouts. They won in the bottom of the seventh on a bases-loaded single by Mason Sorento. Just an unbelievable season for those kids. They lost their second game of the season. They went 35-1. So we've got two state champions out of Andrain this year, which not many people have, so kudos to them. Mr. Hardaway, I'd like to get them in a July meeting, present them with a proclamation. We'll pick one of the two days and get the team here. And I know Jan, you're going to have them. They're going to be the grand marshal?
Correct.
Okay.
Also, I'd like to also acknowledge their coach.
Yeah.
For his accomplishments as the winningest coach in the state of Indiana.
Yep.
So I'd like to acknowledge him at the same time that we acknowledged the baseball team. Okay. What do we need to do? Are you going to make the contact or you want me to do something?
I'll make the contact with Kelly. We'll talk. And Jan and I were talking about something else with the basketball team too possibly, so I'll call Kelly this week.
Okay. That's good. Okay, large gathering permit for St. Elijah Cathedral Serve Fest. Mrs. Shy.
St. Elijah will have its annual Serve Fest event. It will be on Friday, July 19th and Saturday, July 20th, from 12:00 PM to 2:00 AM. On Sunday, from 12:00 PM to 10:00 PM. 800 to 1,000 people will be permitted to the assembly each day. 800 to 1,000 people will be permitted each day, and those amount of tickets will be sold. Indoor and outdoor. Water facilities will be available. Five indoor and one outdoor male toilet facility will be available. Four indoor and one outdoor female facilities will be available and will be maintained by Brew Septic of Lowell, Indiana. An office telephone will be available to the public. Approximately 575 onsite parking spaces will be available and accessible from the paved street. No offsite parking will be used, and there will be no overnight stays. Entertainment will be the tamburlaine's band on each day. The Kulu Dance Band will perform on Saturday night. Security will be provided by Anthony Rendina, Lake County Sheriff's Department.
Motion to approve.
You want a motion? Oh, second.
Motion by Councilman Pettit, second by Councilwoman Yuzelak. We approve the large gathering permit for St. Elijah's Cathedral Serve Fest. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven to zero. Large gathering permit, St. Constantine Helen and Cathedral Grecian Festival. Mrs. Shy?
St. Constantine and Helen Greek Orthodox Cathedral will have its annual Grecian Festival located at 8,000 Madison Street on Friday, July 12th, from 4:00 PM to 11:00 PM, and on Saturday and Sunday, July 13th and 14th, from 12:00 PM to 11:00 PM. Earnings from the event will supplement the cathedral financial needs. Approximately 5,000 people are expected to attend the event. Security personnel will limit the maximum number of people. Security will be provided by the Maryville Police Department. Three water spigots and two drinking fountains will be available inside the facility, and one water spigot will be available on the outside of it. There will be four dumpsters, forty trash containers, and they will be maintained by Star Disposal of Indiana. Approximately 385 onsite parking spaces will be available and will be accessible from paved parking streets. No parking from surrounding property owners will be used. Second.
Motion by Councilwoman Baron, second by Councilwoman Yuzelak, that we approve the large gathering permit for St. Constantine and Helen Cathedral Grecian Festival. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven to zero. At this time, we'd like to open up a public hearing regarding a preliminary determination to issue a general obligation bond of the town in a principal amount not to exceed $12 million. The general obligation bonds enter into a lease with a not-for-profit building corporation to establish for the purpose of providing funds to pay for a portion of the cost of a community center project. Mr. Swentz.
Good evening. This is a public hearing to take input on the community center project to allow citizens to voice their concerns or approval of that project. This is the first step in what will be a fairly long process. The reason we have a public hearing to start is because we are pledging property taxes to the repayment of the bonds. Part of my role in being here tonight is we've provided you, I think in your packets, information required by statute that needs to be provided. We have copies up here for anybody that's interested. It just talks about some of the general information about this bond issue as we know it today. We're looking at approximately 20-year, $12 million lease rental revenue bond that would be paid from the general obligation pledge of the town of Maryville on those bonds. Again, as we discussed in the redevelopment commission, the goal is to structure the debt service of these bonds around debt that is falling off so that the intent is that we would not increase property taxes to pay those bonds off. We would just replace property taxes if they fall off from these prior bonds. Unlike the redevelopment commission public hearing, we don't have tip to replace this, so this will be a straight property tax bond. We will levy a debt service every year to make those payments, and if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Any questions from the council? Ain't none. At this time, we'd like to open it up for public comments regarding the general obligation bond. Is there any public comment? Please state your name, address, and please limit your comments to three minutes.
Okay. Sue Reed, I'm the president and CEO of the Crossroads Regional Chamber of Commerce located at 440 West 84th Drive in Maryville. And I actually have a letter of support that I would like to present to you this evening from our Board of Directors in support of the Community Recreation Center. We represent 650 businesses through four counties in northwest Indiana, and 37% of those businesses are located within, have a Maryville address. Our Board of Directors urges you to approve the funding for this project because we know it creates a higher quality of life, not only for the residents, but also for the business community. It's a known fact that families move into an area that has a high quality of life as well as businesses because they want favorable communities for their employees to work in. It also creates the Parks Department to have adequate programming, not only for the youth in the community, but for the seniors. We know that the existing conditions do not offer the amount of services, and when you have a community recreation center, it has been proven to help reduce crime with youth because they have a good place to go with the programming in place. It also revitalizes a section of Broadway that is in need, and we know that will be an economic driver as well because once you have that, you know, it's kind of, you build it and they will come. It will drive other businesses to moving into the area. We actually did a survey of our membership. 87% of the business community is in favor of a community recreation center, and 57% of the respondents either work and/or own a business in Maryville. So again, we urge you to approve the funding for this, and if I can, I'll present the letter of support.
Hi. How are you?
Good.
Do you have any questions for this one?
No, thank you. Is there any other public comment?
I'm sure most of you know why I'm with it now. My name's Leonard White, Priest and Commitment of Maryville, 28, and I'm the speaker in opposition to the community center.
Please give us your address, please, sir.
5761 Grand Street. I'm speaking in opposition because I do represent 800 residents who told me, in a sense, because I'm their priest and commitment, that they rather have those dollars be used for something else. I'm sure that you got people with a channel of comments, those people that may want to have this thing built. We stand in opposition to that until we can find out how this money's going to be paid back. It's just simple math for me, to be honest with you. This is $12 million. From what I understood, it's going to initially be a $15 million, and then it's going to be $23 million. But so here's what I'm saying. In any case, I know you can get the bond money. That's not a doubt. It's how we're going to pay it back. It's what I'm wondering. Let me give you an example. When you start paying that bond back, even with the Tipp district thing, Sean, it's going to be about $100 million and a half. If I'm wrong, let me know. So I'm just wondering, where do you have a million and a half sitting on the side to pay that? So at this point, I think that's something we should get out to the community, and if you guys feel so strong about this thing, why don't we do a referendum and let the whole community chime in on this instead of a few people that basically want to build this $23 million, whatever you want to call it, community center. I'm sure people need places for their kids to play, but I'm not willing to sit up here and tell you that I want to see $23 million worth of playtime, whether it's some other kids from other communities and things of that nature. That's one. Secondly, economic development? How? How? If you look at economic development right there now, we got Paul's Auto Yard. We got a shack that does storages, and then we got Harold's Chicken. You tell me, how is that economic development? You know my number. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments? Any other public comments? The hearing is closed. Consent agenda.
I think somebody's coming in.
I see.
Good evening. Ladies and gentlemen, my name is Mark Colhill. I am the president of the Leadership Development Program here in Maryville. We're a new established business that just came here. We are here this evening just to present our business to the council, to let you all know who we are and what we're about.
Excuse me, sir. This is, right now, is for, we're talking about the community center. At the end of the council meeting, it's opened up a public...
I'm sorry. I misunderstood. I'm sorry. Thank you.
Thank you. Public hearing is now closed. Counciltable Register Vouch Approval for June 25th, 2019, along with the approval of Town Council Meeting Minutes for June the 11th.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Pettit, second by Councilwoman Baron, that we approve the consent agenda. Any discussion? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Standing Committees, Budgets and Finance, Councilwoman Baron.
No report.
Public Works, Councilman Minchuck.
I have nothing at this time. Bruce, you have anything?
I have nothing either.
All right. Council Affairs, Councilwoman Lamarcus.
No report.
Personnel Policy, Employee Benefits, Councilman Pettit.
No report.
Public Safety, Councilwoman Yuzelak.
Yes. Going back to the Council Affairs and Rebecca Mendez, I don't know if she's here, but our dog warden and the Plan Commissioner, our Planning Director, Sheila, they went out and they gave her a ticket, and she will be scheduled for court because of the dogs that she had in her kennel. She did not remove all of the dogs. There were complaints from the neighbors and a few other people. They attended the last town council meeting, and they were inquiring about it. So I just want to mention that she was issued a ticket, and she will be in court in July.
Thank you.
Okay, you're welcome.
Parks and Recreation, Councilwoman Lamarcus.
I do not have anything but agenda.
I do. Good evening. I just want to report that we're finishing the parade lineups. We have approximately 32 entries currently. It seems that last minute we get a few more. The town flow will be at Dyson Funeral Home for the Town Council, and the parade will start promptly at noon. We also, I mentioned, have a new category this year for kids, the decorated bikes, and we did get some entries for that as well. We also have been working on the first Gospel Fest, and we closed entries now. We have six churches, including Greater Grace Church, Christian Revival Center, Carter Memorial, The Three Sopranos, Reed's Temple, and New Ebenezer Missionary. They will, I started to talk with some of the churches to create the lineups for that date, and we did rent the keyboard for each of the churches' uses for Gospel Fest. The concert prior to that, Concert Under the Stars, which is Friday, July 26th, from 6:00 to 10:00 PM, includes Solid Players Together and Latin Satin Soul. I'm working with Suntier Bank, who is sponsoring the concert. We just are putting out some marketing materials to promote the concert. We've ordered the porta potts already. We have the food vendor in place. We did receive approval from St. Peter and Paul and Christian Revival to utilize the parking lots. We currently have about 570 parking spots. I'm also working with Turkey Creek, who is loaning us some golf carts. We are going to transport some of the handicapped people from the parking lot to the concert area, and we will do the same after the concert, transport them back to their vehicles. And that's, like I said, the 26th, Friday, July 26th, from 6:00 to 10:00 PM. I've also been meeting with the team from DVG Core Construction and Structure Point in the planning and design of the community center. Our next meeting is scheduled for July 2nd at 11:00 AM. We also opened, we have open swim at the high school. It was approved. We're going to start with three dates. It's going to be Monday, July 1st, Monday, July 8th, and Monday, July 15th. This will be from 5:00 to 7:00 PM. We ask people to contact us at the Park Office and get put on a list so we know how many people we can expect to date. We don't have anybody, but we will be there on those dates, hoping that somebody does utilize that service. So those are three test dates that we've worked out with the high school.
Is there a charge?
There's a $5 charge for the open swim.
Thank you.
Are you allowing vendors at the two concerts?
We already, we have a food vendor in place.
Oh, you do? Who is that?
Louis Tacos.
Louis Tacos?
Yes. He's a county police officer. He's been in existence for 10 years with a food truck.
If anybody else wants to be a vendor, can they apply or...
Um, no. We have limited room, and because that's a wetland, we don't have that much room for vendors, so we asked for one vendor. He came through. We had a great vendor last year, but Louis came through right away. He's done the gun show. He does the county fair.
Louis, yeah.
Yeah, you know Louis?
Yeah, I know him very well. He does a good job.
Yeah.
Does he serve strictly tacos?
No.
Tacos and hot dogs and a gamut of different types of foods.
Okay, very good.
And the draft copy is completed of the master plan. We already sent that to Greg Balthus at the DNR. It'll take him about 30 to 45 days to review that. He'll get back with me with some either additions, deletions, or comments, and then once that is taken care of, we'll present it to the council for their approval of the five-year master plan for the Park Department. I have nothing further unless anybody has any questions.
Thank you. Environmental Affairs, Councilwoman Baron.
I have no report, Matt.
No report at this time.
Elections, Public Relations, Councilwoman Yuzelak.
No report, no.
Economic Development, Councilman Pettit.
We have a couple of resolutions later on the agenda, Mr. President, for tax abatement.
Okay. Utility liaison, Councilman Span. No report. Abandoned properties. I have one thing. We've looked at the property at 56th and Broadway on the east side of the street. We're going to clean that up, make that a green space, and plant some grass there. Cut down some trees, cut down some bushes, clean all of the debris that's in there, and make that corner a little bit more presentable. Right now, it looks horrible, but we are aware of it, and Public Works is on top of it, and by the end of the summer, we should have a nice green space area for the residents that live there. We'll possibly put a bench there and give people someplace to go out and sit and watch the cars go down Broadway.
That'll be nice.
Be interesting.
Very.
That concludes Committee Reports General Orders. Ordinance, first reading ordinance, ordinance number 19-16, an ordinance of the town of Maryville, Indiana, providing that the zoning ordinance, town of Maryville, Lake County, Indiana, be amended by changing the established R3 residential zoning to PUD Plan Unit Development District.
So moved, Mr. President.
Motion by Councilman Pettit, second by Councilwoman Yuzelak, that we approve ordinance 19-16 on first reading. Any discussion? Good evening.
Good evening. I'm Jeff Georgie. I'm here on behalf of Saxon Partner. The petitioner, the owner, is Jeff Brant. I'm with Jillian Hussey, who is a representative also from Saxon Partners. We come to tonight having received a favorable recommendation from the Plan Commission. This is an apartment complex somewhat uniquely developed by Saxon Partners that will occupy land just south of Methodist Hospital and north of 93rd Avenue in the Broadfield Development. The business model for Saxon Partners is to serve the medical community by providing housing for young professionals, millennials specifically, to locate them in close proximity to their places of employment. And this site works for them, given the medical corridor that is and has become that area, with the goal of attracting people to live in that development that either work at the hospital, service the medical buildings that are in that area, and the fact that NIPSCO is there is also an attractive addition. Their business model is a little bit different than normal apartment living. These will be limited to one-bedroom and studio apartments, again with the idea that we are looking for young millennials and not families in these developments, and this business model is something that Saxon is doing, not just in Indiana, although they're in Fort Wayne, they're in this area in South Bend, they're located on the east coast, but they are particularly fond of this particular site. The site formerly was a PUD that was vacated. Mr. Brant had it for a similar use. This use is less dense than what Mr. Brant had sought and the council had approved. I told you that we came here with a favorable recommendation from the BZA. I made that sound simple. It wasn't quite so simple. We did a workshop, and we then came for approval to the BZA. There was and has been a longstanding dialogue between this developer and the citizens in Broadfield. Mr. Pettit has been integral in facilitating communication between the developer and those residents. They came to the meeting. They had questions. We had answers. They had requested some additional time to digest information, so we withdrew our request at that time and deferred. Mr. Pettit orchestrated another workshop and invited Christopher Burke, Matt Lake, Don Teringa, all to address the specific concern of the residents, which was stormwater management. There is a retention pond on site through the collective work of four different engineers, and agreement and consensus amongst them, the pond that's there is being expanded to accommodate what all the engineers agree is a sufficient stormwater management plan. The buildings themselves will be three-story, four units, three stories each, limited in density to 275 units. Renderings were provided both to the BZA and to the members of Broadfield. It appears, I can tell you, that we have satisfied the residents of Broadfield. They have come to the previous meetings. Unless I am incorrect, I don't know that there are any residents from Broadfield here today to speak in favor or to oppose. I can tell you, at the BZA meeting, the question was asked of the 20 or 25 people that were present, if anyone opposed the project, and not one person, by the time we were done, opposed the development. So we're here today asking for the town to approve this PUD and change the zoning ordinance to allow this development.
Anything from the council?
No. I just would thank Jeff and Gary Warfel from Saxon, and especially Bob and Pop Santee and Matt Lake and Thomas Burke for putting the residents' minds at ease. As we all know, one of the top things, if not the top thing in Maryville, is drainage. And when we get a gully washer, all of our wards have water. Where does it go? That was a concern with the pond, and Matt, thank you again for working on that, along with Bob. I think the residents are satisfied, and that's, bosses are happy, we're happy.
Well, let me add that they also want to expand the retention pond. They will make it bigger.
Yeah.
That will alleviate the flooding, I hope. The residents were happy at the last meeting, including you too, Jeff.
Rule called, Mr. Gertie.
Yes.
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 Motion carries seven to zero. First reading.
Can we do the second reading tonight?
I have no problem with that, Mr. Georgie. It's a ward council, and I'll make a motion if we suspend the rules and hear this on second reading.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Pettit, second by Councilwoman Baron, that we suspend the rules on ordinance 19-16 to move it to second reading. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven to zero. First reading.
Thank you. Can we do the second reading tonight?
I have no problem with that, Mr. Georgie. It's a ward council, and I'll make a motion if we suspend the rules and hear this on second reading.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Pettit, second by Councilwoman Baron, that we suspend the rules on ordinance 19-16 to move it to second reading. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you all.
Thank you. Second reading ordinance. Well, that concludes first reading ordinances, second reading ordinance, ordinance number 19-16, an ordinance of the town of Maryville, Indiana, providing that the zoning ordinance, town of Maryville, Lake County, Indiana, be amended by changing the established R3 residential zoning to PUD Plan Unit Development.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Pettit, second by Councilwoman Baron, that we approve ordinance 19-16 on second reading. Any discussion, council committees? At this time, because it is the second reading ordinance, we'd like to open it up for public comment. Is there any public comment on ordinance 19-16, second reading ordinance? comment. Is there any public comment on ordinance nineteen dash sixteen, second reading ordinance? Any public comment? Any public comments? Rule call.
Yes.
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 Yes. Motion carries-
I might add, Mr. President, and I, and I wanna put Jeff on the spot. This is in our Broadway Tiff district, and this is, what is the investment, Jeff? Approximately? I thought they, didn't they say eleven million dollars at the Plan Commission?
Yeah.
More than that? So, more money into the Broadway Tiff district.
More than eleven million, okay, from what you said.
Welcome to town.
What?
Eleven million.
Eleven million.
Eleven million or more.
Uh, could be thirty million.
Ah, there you go.
Uh, that concludes second reading ordinance, says Resolution, Resolution nineteen dash seventeen, a resolution of Town of Maryville, Lake County, Indiana, transferring monies of the twenty-nineteen budget within certain categories.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Councilwoman Usulak, second by Councilwoman Baron, that we approve Resolution nineteen dash seventeen. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Resolution nineteen dash eighteen, a resolution of Town of Maryville, Lake County, Indiana, transferring monies of the twenty-nineteen budget within certain categories.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Councilwoman Baron, second by Councilwoman Pettit, that we approve Resolution nineteen dash eighteen. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Resolution nineteen dash nineteen, a resolution of the Town of Maryville, Lake County, Indiana, approving certain amendments to the declaratory resolutions and redevelopment plan for the Maryville Road Development Area and the Broadway redevelopment area and related matters.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Councilwoman Baron, second by Councilman Pettit, that we approve Resolution nineteen dash nineteen. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Resolution nineteen dash twenty, resolution confirming the designation of a economic revitalization and approving the deduction from assets value of new real property improvement.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Pettit, second by Councilwoman Baron, that we approve Resolution nineteen dash twenty. Any discussion?
Yes, that's assessed value.
Thank you.
According to the paper.
Thank you.
Okay.
This is the last step, Mr. President, for the Beck, what's being called the Becknell Spec Building, south of the railroad tracks, north of Sixty-Ninth on Mississippi, two-hundred-and-eighty thousand square feet.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, uh, Resolution nineteen dash twenty-one, a resolution of Town of Maryville, Indiana.
That's all you got?
That's all we got.
That's all we got?
That's it.
Motion to approve, Mr. President.
Whoops.
I'll explain it in a minute, Bruce. I'll just wait for the second.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Pettit, second by Councilwoman Baron, that we approve Resolution nineteen dash twenty-one. Any discussion?
Mr. President, uh, Mr. Anderson is in the back representing his client, which, uh, Roxanne and I ha- and, and Margie have seen at the Plan Commission. This is for long-term, long-term care investments, Six LLC, which is the hospital on the eleven acres on the south side of Ninety-third Avenue. One of the things that we did previously with the previous approvals for the hospital was grant a tax abatement so that they could install a lift station being required by MCD due to the adult, uh, medical waste that would be produced by these, by this facility. Is that correct, Richard? Do I have that correct?
That's correct.
So, this is just, we finally got the resolution from Tom Pittman at Baker, uh, Barnes and Thornburg.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven zero. That concludes resolutions. Uh, no BZA action?
No.
Thank you. Old business, any old business? Any new business? At this time, we'd like to open it up for public comment. If there's any public comment, we ask that you come, state your name, your address, and please limit your comments to three minutes.
My name is Leonard White, fifty-seven, sixty-one, Grant Street. Um, you are the chairman of the Black Committee, is that correct?
That's right.
Okay, I heard you say some things about it, but we have some issues in our ward. Burnt-out building. Uh, uh, this eighteen-fifty-five, uh, Fifty-Eighth Avenue, I think I've seen it on many a occasion. Also, our streets, uh, uh, Fifty-Eighth and Jefferson, it's been like that for four months. There's trash, weeds, garbage, all that stuff down there. And here's, here's why I'm saying to you, Hardaway, because, Mr. Hardaway, uh, it's because you are ahead of that, and I see you taking care of your area, but we're not getting that. Uh, secondly, uh, this, this also is for Chrissy, uh, Baron. Uh, she's over the, uh, environment. I just had a pro- uh, issue with her, not issue with her, but a question for her, in the terms of our recycling rate for, uh, for Maryville. Do you know that recycling rate?
Was it fifty? Wait, it's, that's, that's different.
I don't, I don't, I can't tell you offhand. I'd have to look it up.
Okay, you can, we can do that next time.
It changes from month to month.
Okay.
It's done on a yearly basis, 'cause you know I, I know about that, right? Now, here's the thing too, uh, uh, this, this, I'm sorry, did you wanna say something?
No.
Uh, with the compost facility, how's that, is that working out good? Is we, are we selling the compost or?
That's Lake County solid waste.
No, we have a compost facility over here.
We don't, we don't.
Oh, yeah, we, um-
Oh, that's-
We have, yeah, the pit.
Yeah, the pit.
The pit.
We've been using most of it, and some of it, um, we, uh, we use for, uh, a lot of residents come and pick it up, so.
Okay, no, I just wanted to know if it's coming in or coming out.
We tried to solve for a couple of years, but we just couldn't get you to buy, buy you to buy it.
Okay, 'cause you know that's gonna pile up, so.
But we're getting rid of it.
Okay, uh, my last question is from, uh, Councilman Hardaway.
Excuse, uh, this is public comment. I'm not gonna answer any questions.
What I'm, I'm gonna say, what I wanna say here.
Yeah, I'm listening.
So, here's my comment then.
Thank you.
Uh, you sit on NERC, is that correct? Okay. Uh, when I was looking up under NERC, I did see two things that you and Sean did. You guys created what something's called a created livable community, and both of you guys have those designations. I was just wondering why the rest of the council members didn't have that designation, because I know our ward doesn't have that designation. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Any other public comment?
All right. Hey, good evening to the council. My name is Anthony Green. I live at fifty-five-fifty Grant Street, uh, precinct committee man for, uh, well over a decade or so. And there are some issues that I've had, uh, with the retaining pond that is in Hickory Ridge, which is directly west of my house, and then the burrows that run, uh, between Grant Street, Johnson, and some of the others, where we have experienced flooding of epic proportions. The retaining pond that's behind my house now, it is like a total eyesore. You can't even go out the backyard. It stinks. It's growing up. There's nobody who's come out. Matt Lake came out, took pictures. Every time it rains severely, my entire street floods, okay? People have moved in and out of my precinct because their homes flood. And I just would like for somebody to address that issue. I'm in the Eighteenth Precinct. Okay, if you guys would come out and take a look, my address is fifty-five-fifty Grant. The retaining pond is directly behind my house. It's in between us and Hickory Ridge. And while, you know, we see a lot of other issues being, you know, they, we have people who have, including myself, who've had to do over forty thousand dollars, uh, in improving my life also, uh, just in repairs, uh, trying to, you know, stop the subsequent flooding. And it, it's an eyesore, and I, Mr. Span has addressed it on several times. Yep, so, thank you very much.
Matt, isn't that part of Gary's sanitary district?
The pond is privately owned by Hickory Ridge Lake Apartments. We had approached their board because we offered to actually create a large detention facility there, but they would have to sign over an easement to us. We actually have a preliminary layout of all that. Um, so, we're willing to invest the dollars in the improvement, but we would need the easement to do that, and we would need their board to, uh, sign up and grant the easement. Um, as far as the intersections there, Johnson and Grant, uh, you do have lateral six, which is a Lake County regulated drain, and our drainage is, is at the mercy of their drainage. So, that's the county. So, when that, that whole ditch is perched up, that water can't drain out.
Yeah.
As far as your home personally?
Mm-hmm.
We have Gary's sanitary district there, and there's a lot of backups going on in their system. It's infiltration and inflow. It's I and I. What happens is when it rains, the water soaks in the ground, gets into their pipes, and then it, it surcharges back into homes. We're always recommending, uh, residents put a backwater valve on their sanitary. That basically is like a check valve for the water to keep it in the sanitary system and not in your basement. And we recommend that to a lot of residents, and it's helped out tremendously. But, um, I, I think GSD needs to be a little bit more proactive on their system, but we're willing to invest the dollars in, uh, detention, but we need the land. We can't just eminent domain and take it over. We would have to have an easement from them, but we do have a nice layout for that whole area, 'cause all that water comes from the west to the east and into lateral six there, if we can hold it back. Um, but we need the property to do that. Um, and we are actually, uh, we designed and got an easement from the school, from, uh, a property on the, um, by the prison center. There's some, some town ground and some, uh, land that's owned, but had, we acquired easement from the, the, uh, the school, uh, district. And so, that is gonna be a couple-million-dollar project right there. That'll help lateral six. It won't solve it, but it's gonna help keep it in check a little longer when it rains. Uh, there's also a study that's being done in Gary by Christopher Burke that's gonna reroute portion of lateral six. That would help out tremendously if that could happen. So, we're working with Hobart on that because if the timing is right and we can release that water and divert it to Hobart, um, then that's gonna help because by the time, uh, Turkey Creek runs into Lake George, um, it's gonna strategically help them with, with flooding down there. So, there's a lot of moving parts there, but, uh, in terms of the, uh, like apartments, it is a privately-owned pond. Uh, we have met with their board, um, and, and we left the invitation open. I could show you the draft easement agreement we've been prepared for them and the draft set of plans that we have for them. If they'd allow us to do it, we'd love to put a detention facility there and manage it.
Okay. And I just wanna cite, uh, both myself and Councilman Span have, uh, personally gone to Hickory Ridge and, and, uh, and, and my problem with this, uh, even if it's a private property, there has to be some code enforcement in terms of it. If you go and, and I'll take pictures and I'll bring them to you the next time. It is a to, people don't, they can't even sit outside. It stinks. There is absolutely no citation been, uh, issued to Hickory Ridge, okay? And it absolutely does absolutely nothing for the people who live in my precinct, who have to put money constantly, year after year. If I, if I need something when, uh, the street floods and I gotta get somebody to come out there just to keep people from going through high water, I have to pick up the phone and call G Ward, because absolutely, there's no other way it'll get done. So, I'd just like to-
You can call Public Works. They have a twenty-four hour line if someone's on call, uh, with regards to closing roads if there's dangers for high, high water. So, um, that's, that's an option as well.
Okay. Well, yeah, just to be clear, I issued magnets, uh, and I got this idea from Councilman Span with all the Public Works, everything in Maryville, and we gave them out to two thousand people, two thousand people, okay?
Very good.
And we, and we're not able to get any help. So, I like that.
Tony, do you pay your conservancy bill to Gary's sanitary?
It's paid to Gary's sanitary district.
Yeah, because they were supposed to be out there years ago.
Well, it's taxation without representation. So, we pay them, we pay them money, and they, we don't have a sewer system.
Well, the sanitary sewers, they're always overflow. They go into that ditch. I do know that the ditch behind Grant Street, and they've had a problem with the valves off there, out there too. At one time, Gary shut down something, Matt, help me.
Maybe the lift station.
Yeah, Matt's come out and took pictures.
Shut down the lift station, and everybody there flooded, everybody.
Right, well.
That I do know.
And, and here's what I can tell you, and I just, but want, just to make, make my point, that it's, that's a, a very hard issue, particularly when people have passed out, uh, the community flyers with my telephone number on it, and they call me every time it flips, when I can do nothing about it. So, I'm just asking for some assistance.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
Good evening, Town Council. My name is Mark Colehill, president of the Leadership Development Program. We're located at five-fourteen East Eighty-Six Avenue here in Maryville, Indiana. And we'd just like to present our business to you all tonight, and we appreciate the time that you've given us to listen to us. Uh, we're at the Leadership Development Program, and we are a community development program, and what we do, we develop leaders. We train, we sharpen leaders. What we do best, we turn followers into leaders, and their leaders into great leaders. We have a nine-step program that we use, that's been tried and proven. And we would just like to be able to come to the community, to be able to help our youth, those in businesses, schools, churches, and help develop leaders. If you look at the world we live in today, you can trace all of what's going wrong or what's bad in our, in our communities back to poor leadership. And I'm sure that we can all agree that we need better leadership. So, I'm standing here alone with my coworker. He's the CEO and our Director of Operations. He's gonna get into more detail about our Leadership Development Program.
Good evening. My name is Lane Crookshank, and, uh, as Mark said, I'm the CEO and Director of Operations for the Leadership Development Program. Again, we thank you for the opportunity to just present ourselves to this community, to this great, uh, county of Maryville. Uh, leadership is such a, a broad stroke on the need and the necessity of why we need great leadership. And we have a program that we formulated, uh, not just by trial and error, but, but through study, uh, through education systems that we believe can help at any level, at any level, from, uh, as our motto is, from the cradle to the corporate arena. Uh, what we do is design a program that's specifically tailored to the individual. That's why we are not just a Leadership Development Program, but we also a personal development program for those that are in trouble, those that are in, uh, abuse, those that are, just have issues going on. We believe that if we can just develop them from the inside out, it can help cater, uh, and deter some of the things that's going on in society. Uh, we believe this program, uh, can help educational systems, if it was a part of their curriculum, to help them become leaders at any level, at any grade, fifth graders, uh, incoming freshmen, community college. Let there be a curriculum or an elective that they can choose to, to not only, uh, get, get, get scores and everything, but to help them transition into better situations in life, how to handle things better. And this is why we thank you for this opportunity to just let us, uh, be introduced to you all. Uh, we're, we're here just asking for the endorsement, for the support, for the backing. Uh, if you need further information, we have analytical into information. We have the metrics. We have everything that's needed to help promote a program like this, to institute it into a town like this.
What we're gonna ask, sir, what I'm gonna ask, is that you come to a workshop. When we have a workshop, we'll, we'll let you know when.
Yes.
And then you can come and present your program to us. How's that?
Sounds good.
Okay?
That's good. Thank you very much. Thank you for your time.
Mr. Spires or the next town manager will be in touch with you. Any other public comment? Any other public comment? Announcement. Water Zoning Appeals tomorrow, June twenty-sixth at six-thirty PM, Stormwater Management Board Meeting, July twenty, Ju- July second at four-thirty, Plan Commission Workshop Cancelled, uh, Budget and Finance Meeting, July ninth at five PM. Town Council, the next Town Council Meeting will be, uh, July the ninth at six-thirty PM. In March, we have a, uh, vacant and abandoned building meeting Thursday.
Oh, this Thursday?
This Thursday.
Because it's not on here. I was looking, looking.
At two-thirty.
And neither, Mr. President, is the Personnel Executive Session for July second at five-thirty for the Town Manager Interviews.
Right, okay.
Say that again, Sean.
Five-thirty, July second.
What day is that?
That's a Monday. That's a Tuesday.
July second regarding Town Manager.
Yep.
Right?
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Motion to adjourn. Is that good?
We're done.
You're welcome. You're welcome.
I was gonna say it.